Dan and Chris, you ready? Dan's ready. I'll be your... Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for joining us in the pledge of allegiance. I did not see Cory tonight. Dan, you are going to do it tonight, weren't you?
No.
Uh, hello. Anybody here for public input? Seeing none, amendments to the agenda. I have one, it's item J. Under new business, it's an EMS bid change order number one. EMS bid change order number one, that's a J. Any others? Additions or changes from council members? Seeing none, moving on to the mayor's report. I hope everybody's been outside, enjoying the day. I appreciate the city and all the work that those guys are doing. I know with the good weather, they're able to get out and change poles and do lots of other things, street signs and all that. So that's very much appreciated. I understand that the college, the hiring commission was here. Very well, wishing them the best that they're... You know, when will we hear Cory on that?
Well, preliminary report can come out here in, I think, March 15th.
Okay.
That'll give us a little idea. But officially, it won't be till summer.
Okay. So, March 15th is a preliminary report. Wish them the best on that. You know, I think I appreciate everybody coming out and supporting them in whatever way was possible during that time. And Cory, thanks for your work with the college on that.
Thanks for everyone's help.
The consent agenda, what is your desire?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Been moved and seconded? Roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
E-mail?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
I'm Kerry. I do not know any appointments tonight. Is that correct?
No.
Moving on to P and Z, Gary, anything you wish to report for P and Z?
No.
No old business, so we're at item number 10. New business, item A, body, warrant, camera bids. Please.
Any questions on here?
Gee, I've got a couple. From the camera expert, what I mean. But you're going to talk.
It's on topic, he'll answer questions. So, the police department is looking at purchasing body on-camera systems for the police department. We're looking at the recommendation to approve a purchase of two body cameras and the software from WatchGuard, which is currently using in patrol cars. At a cost of $3,205.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of two body cameras and software for WatchGuard in the amount of $3,205.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any other questions?
I have a question about how does the storage of the data through the cloud work on this versus some of these other options?
Well...
Please step up, definitely.
Sorry. Cloud is pretty secure, but not 100%. So, if we can avoid that, we might be right now. We, you know, have our own internal storage and might continue using that.
So, this would be using that instead?
Yes.
Awesome. Um, one other question. Now, you normally have two officers on duty at a time? One?
Two. One, something, two at most.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask is if you have like two and then next shift you have one, will one, both the batteries be depleted on these? Like 10-hour life or so?
Our, when we have two people on, it's just for a six-hour period. So, there will always be some recharge time. There'll be a fresh one. Yep.
Additional questions?
The police officers are in favor of this?
Definitely.
And we have an all-see to go with it?
We do.
Okay. And then we have the stolen vehicle to pay for. We don't start another stolen.
Not stolen.
I guess a question I would have would be in need for more than two in the near future.
Possibly, and that's why I kind of put together bids for six, for every officer in the other bids. In this current WatchGuard system, you only really need two because they have to sync up to the existing cars and the existing system that we have. The other cameras, they are cheaper. But to use them, only them, without this WatchGuard system, you would have to buy their whole system of downloads, storage, all that. And actually, in the long run, it's a lot more expensive. So, a suggestion might be down the road. When one expands, we don't have to go with the WatchGuard for the other cameras. We can go with the cheaper ones and not do the automatic downloads or use their storage. We can just internally download them ourselves. But to do that, 100% of the time would be way too much of a job for us. So, that's why the wireless down.
So, this downloads over time? I mean, if you're in a house or somewhere, it downloads at that point. Is that what you're saying?
No, well, like if we go to a scene and we have all cameras, a body camera and car camera. And there's actually a third camera in the backseat. We may have all three going. It'll download to the server inside the car. Once we get to the station, it links up and wires some down to the sort of computer.
Okay. And that's all automatic?
Yes.
Okay. Additional comments?
I have a question, a comment. Something that we talked about for a while. I'm very pleased to see them for the council tonight. Not, mostly for the safety of our offices.
We're all very much aware.
Who manages the storage, the hardware?
Uh, we will internally, and we have it secured to all the computer. So, there's some additional security measures that we take where that computer also just can't disappear. It's locked up.
Yeah, I know, but it's not 100% secure. But you could argue that hard drive or digital actual space is not very secure either. I mean, just thinking of a situation where if it breaks or it gets pulled up and up and down, electrocuted by a lightning striker or something, all that data would be gone.
You are correct. I think it is, came out with the exact order before they mirrored the hard drives to where a, what is it?
A raid?
Yeah, raid. So, I think they're stored on two different drives, but it is in the same computer, so yes, that is a risk. You know, I could always look into WatchGuard to see what backup they do have, but we do not currently back it up.
So, did you set up all the stuff, the raid and the computer?
No, WatchGuard came down and did for us. It's their, and they brought a system down and set it up. And they'll do it remotely anytime we need help.
As I say, it's probably some kind of cheaper option than using them. That would just back up what's on a computer. They'd just mirror it, but at the same time, if you're into security issues and stuff, you'd probably find something that's proprietary for that. The content, that's our, you know, the content, moving to a very high level of security. I mean, just alone, you can't just back it up to whatever.
At that point, I'll, I'll look into how we back it up.
Greg, do you have a question?
No.
Comment? Okay. Any other questions? Additional questions? Scott or Tim?
Benny?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
You know, Mark?
Yes.
Motion Kerry. Thank you. Appreciate it. Item number two, EMS building contract.
Mr. Mayor, a quick motion to approve EMS building construction contract with losing its company in the amount of $803,000 and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and all associated USDA rural development documents for the construction contract.
And you're going to give me a copy of that, yes?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a second?
I have a second.
Greg, you want to explain?
I'm sorry, Bill.
I think you may want to combine this motion with item J as well and do them all at one time just so that the city doesn't adopt the contract for $803,000, which is actually going to be a $700,000 contract. So, what I suggest is that you adopt the contract and change order number one into same motion. Might be easier to withdraw.
Okay. Maker?
Yes.
Yes, that's fine.
So, Greg, you want to start that motion? Or you want to explain the change order?
Well, I would recommend that the motion be made that would approve the construction contract and change order number one, which would reduce the cost of the project from $803,000 to $700,000 and also authorize me to sign any other rural development documents that would be required for the construction contract and/or the change order.
And that's my motion.
You want to pass that down now? That is the motion. Benny, is there a second?
I think there was a second.
Five seconds. Thank you.
Okay.
You have a motion. Okay, just second. So, does everybody understand what we're having to do here? We have to approve the contract. The contract is $803,000. The change order is for, to change that back to $700,000 and then we might have to parse that motion. It's so that as rural development throws these surprises at us and all that, that Greg has the authority to sign all those. Greg, would you do okay with that?
Yeah. The original bid was $803,000. We went through the value engineering process. That's how we got to $700,000. Rural Development wants to run it as an $803,000 contract with a change order of $103,000. It brings it down to $700,000. That's how they want to do it. But that's why we're doing it kind of a...
Snap.
We're following the...
To introduce that process.
Yeah. And the reason I ask that I be able to sign any associated documents that apply to either the original contract or the change order is because this has been a process where every day a new piece of paperwork pops up. And so, this will allow me to go ahead and sign it as long as it was related to the contract or the change order without having to call a whole other meeting. Now, if it was a request for money or if it was another change order or something like that, then that will, I would go ahead and bring that to you for decision. But these will be related documents, whether it's anti-lobbying documents or various federal required documents that may come up during the execution.
Would that find explanation? Are there any additional questions? Any additional questions? Roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
E-mail?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Benny? Yes, thank you.
Motion Kerry. No calls. All right, Mr. Dunn, arises, you talked to us about street milling and overlay bids. Item number C.
Yes, for pure timing, I think, ever. We did issue business here. Circle C paving that did our chip seal last year. Then on asphalt. Still consider it higher, but I agree firms are going to get pretty far shake for APAC shears.
Okay, hold on, is there a motion?
Thank you very much for the approval, circle C paving.
APAC, sorry. APAC shears.
Paying the chip...
Oh, okay. Recommend approval of APAC shears in the amount of $134,993.85
We have a motion.
17 asphalt paving program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Now, Tim, do you wish to tell us more? Do you have to take comments?
Oh, I just, shears did get higher than that and told them to be again lower. And take that, drop another amount of water off the lift. That would be for very efficient circle C. Because I wanted to leave something in the kidney for part of the school. And I think you remember we're going, also from bringing over to Tim's. I agree to yourself.
Okay. Are there questions, additional questions of Tim? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Benny? Yes. Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
E-mail?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion Kerry. Item D, street chip and seal bids. What is your desire?
Make the motion to approve circle C paving for $39,930.27.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Tim, is there anything new here, new rock or new dust or anything else you want to talk about?
Exactly the way we did it last year. You got companies.
Same company, everything?
Yes.
You were very pleased with them last year?
Yeah, they did.
Okay. Okay. Is there, is that lower than what you expected?
No, it was four cents higher. Sorry.
Okay.
Well...
So, there's no additional streets or anything we can cover because it was extra money?
No.
Okay. Anybody have additional questions for Tim? Reference chip sealing for this year? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mark?
Yes.
E-mail?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Motion Kerry. LED streetlights?
Streetlights. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought there was another one.
I'm getting out of big Chris again.
Okay. Does council play here?
No. Tim, same. What's your pleasure?
I make the motion for $6,917.34 for LED light pictures from Stannion.
Is that right? Yes, Greg, you saying one? Well, is there a second?
Second.
Tim?
This is continuation of our program that we've been doing. The LEDs are more efficient by 10 to 15% less energy usage. And Stannion had a significant, we didn't get eight more lights for Stannion's grid than we could on the other. So, that's one recommended.
Tim, are these without the globe or...
No, without. We found that the globe was adding value.
Are these, the continuation of basically the same light we've been purchasing that, same hue, same all that?
Same, everything.
Everything's the same.
And it was, we worried we'd get three companies bidding the same light this time, so that's...
Is it pricing staying that same on these or is it starting to...
I think that actually is a little bit down from what we had at 92.
Is this bid from Stannion, it shows taxes?
Yes, tax included.
Why do we have to pay tax on it?
Electric, we have to pay tax. The other departments have the milk, water, sewer, and...
Okay. Thanks.
It's only city department that does pay tax.
Are the other LED lights holding up? They looking well?
I have problems that you have.
I have noticed that it seems like the LED lights seem to be more of a spotlight, more focused, whereas I want for more floodlight. Do you know of anything that works to create more flood versions of LED lights?
More LED lights.
Pretty much just more. I think the other theory there too, though, isn't it the spotted down on the street versus up into the house windows and everything else?
Yeah, and they actually call it light pollution. You know, you don't need light everywhere. So, you put light in.
I just noticed like on some sidewalks and stuff where it used to be illuminated, it's not. But it's not a huge hazard. What, what do you think? I just didn't look, I mean, what is the...
You did a comparison, $100,000.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Tim? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
E-mail?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Benny?
Motion Kerry. Item number F is a composter.
Okay, for 48 watts.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Okay, two.
I was going to say the A team now.
Yeah.
You say so.
AA, totally.
1997, the city purchased a composter for composting yard waste at the bowling yard. This has served real well. But after 20 years of service, it's really starting to show its age. Operating in a wet environment, it's starting to rust and it's major structural rust. So, we're looking to replace that. Received a couple of bids. And the one we want to recommend was from Arrowmaster for the PT 120 from Midwest Biosystems. $1,636.
Council, what is your desire?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Where are these funds coming from now?
Uh, the Refuge Reserve Funds.
Is this basically the same model we, I mean, just different?
This is...
Same company?
Yeah, same company, same model, just newer. They've done some updates and stuff during the period over the years. But it's basically the same one.
My tracker is in port.
Did you say this was a biosystem or a bio system?
Bio.
Oh, bio.
Uh, I did notice you mentioned the main problems with like humidity and stuff causing corrosion. I saw that they offered like a stainless steel sheet metal upgrade. I'm assuming that the real problem isn't the sheet metal. No, it's more the structural steel that's...
The last one that you had, though, the sheet metal on it was just regular, wasn't it stainless?
It was just regular. We had one panel that we did replace because of rust, but that was not a major issue at all. Not, not for, I think it was $2,400 for stainless steel. And that's, that's on board.
20 years of operation is pretty good.
That's, that's...
For the environment that it's operating.
Yeah, it's, it's operating in a hot humid. With water on it all the time when it's, and it's operating. So, yeah, it's lasted.
Outside of the equipment, is that, you're changing it, doing it, composting it. Are people using a lot of that? Are they coming to get it? Are we able to get rid of that? Or do we need to push that some more? What's going on with that?
We go through some. I think one of the biggest problems with the compost is, and we need to look at maybe how we try and get people to drop stuff off. You know, if you put weeds and all kinds of other stuff into what we're composting, that's kind of what you're going to get. So, really, it needs to be just grass and leaf, leaves that go in there. But it, it works out really well. And I think we, we don't get rid of near as much as we produce, but we do get rid of a fair amount of compost.
Is there any, again, and again, I have no knowledge of this, is there anything you can put in the liquid that you mix that makes those, kills the seeds?
That's all temperature. And, and we get it fairly warm to where they're wanting us to get it. But, you know, you're, you're not going to kill all that stuff.
Any additional questions for Chris?
Bill?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm looking at the actual proposal and it should be $34,040, I believe. Because it says 10% down and the balance would be $60,636.
$34,040.640? 37,040.640.
Proposal total, $34,040.40. 10% down payment, $3,404. Balance due prior to shipping, $30,636. So...
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Good catch, Larry.
That's great, yeah.
So, the new number is $34,040.40.
Correct. Who, who is the maker? I'm sorry. You wish to amend the...
I'll amend that to $34,040.
Okay. Who's that?
Blaine.
Second.
Been moved and amended to be $34,040. Is there enough funds in the wastewater refuse something, something account? Refuge or, that's the 50 cents we all pay every month?
It's the $8,000 transfer year. Is that possible?
So, there's enough money here?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Good catch, thank you, Greg. Roll call, please.
Benny? Yes. Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
E-mail?
Yes.
Motion Kerry.
Thank you.
Item G, power supply economics study.
We have a proposal from Solon Associates to look at the opportunity to participate in the dogwood generating facility, to look at the economics and also recommend whether we should participate, if we participate at what level from 1 to 2 megawatts. Proposal amount is $20,000.
Recommend approval of the economic feasibility study of the dogwood generating facility to be adopted by Solon Associates in the amount of $20,000.[1598.32]
The move, is there a second?
Say it.
Questions, Greg or others? I think that one would be a nice round number for proposal. Figure out your hours and then you... Definitely something we need to get done, so appreciate everybody supporting that.
You ready?
Oh, we have a question.
I know we budgeted twice that, uh, will there be first things on other issues or are we done? Potentially, um, you know...
This one's kind of critical.
Yeah, this one's kind, on this particular project, no. I'll answer, on this particular project, no. But there may be other opportunities. And as we're moving in that direction with the expiration of our contract, uh, with the ability to make sure we're doing so prudently.
Now, roll call please.
Blaine?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ego?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Question carry, thank you very much. Item H is a ball field development design firm. Again, through, through to, uh, Greg.
Uh, city staff and USD four hundred staff have been, um, actually have solicited a request for qualifications from six different architectural firms for, uh, ball field development design on the property that's jointly built by USD four hundred in the city of Blount, Florida. Narrowed that list down to three firms, brought them in for interviews, which were Thursday afternoon of last week. Um, and the recommendation of that committee after interviews is to, um, select HTK architects as the firm for design. Uh, once they're notified, we sit down for finest scope of service and have an actual, uh, proposal and contract them out. But, um, right now, just, um, looking to contract HDA architects, uh, for the ball field design.
Just takes action even though you know about it?
Correct. And the actual contract would be, um, next meeting, which is what, March sixth or March twentieth? I don't know the exact time right yet.
Council, what is your desire on this?
Two words? Second?
And then second, questions?
I'm familiar with HTK and, uh, very well respected firms. Well, I have a question about all this. Have we made the swap with Baptist Church for the piece of property adjacent to them?
No, we have not.
Are we pursuing that? Should we or will we?
No, we're not.
Okay. And the house will be what?
The house, the house will be auctioned.
Okay. It'll be auctioned. But as you look at this, uh, Skokie Valley thing, it's basically a square, right? Of which we don't really have a square.
Well, they just tried to throw some concepts out, but that is not what it's actually gonna end up looking. They were just looking at potential different options out there. More of a presentation of this, okay, what's actually gonna be designed.
When you get to the design phase, how are you deciding what we build? What's the process?
You know, part of it will be, you know, we've always talked about more of a phased approach to, um, part, well, mainly just cost. Um, but as I imagine as part of we develop or negotiate the services, it will include estimates of, of what would be just to develop an additional ball field. And the idea is, I've been talking about is practice ball field and practice baseball field. But we'll also have a few estimates on, okay, once it's fully developed, you know, a fully developed ball field is playable in the, a fully developed complex, just so we have an idea of, of what the projected cost would be and if it makes sense to be more aggressive in trying to see if that will come.
But as far as what you're shooting for, uh, see the conceptual areas of soccer field, there's some one time maybe a football field. Well, or maybe it could be both. Is that, that kind of conversation?
That hasn't happened yet. They just put that in there as an option. And, uh, you know, their thought was there's a house close by, soccer field, not lighting, building will burn, we'd be able to separate separation. But that's not based upon a discussion with the committee, that was their own concept.
Additional questions here?
Wendy said the committee, that's some kind of committee with the school district?
Yes, Kate and I and, uh, school superintendent, facilities, uh, director, um...
I've been there.
The mayor's been there, um, uh, school board member and then some high school administration.
Additional questions? Just need a roll call or... All those and beggars say aye? Aye. I thought the same song. Thank you very much. Cool structure, thank you.
Um, in front of you is a bid from Midhans Construction for two thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. And this is to repair and renovate the second of two pool with structures we had. The first one you remember, uh, last spring we did the repairs on that one, which was between the water slide and the two dark corners we had. And we're now budgeting to replace the second one, which is a base two B B pool.
Same type of repairs, a little bit, it's completely functional, the exact same thing. How's this, um, what's the...
I'd like to recommend, uh, Midhans Construction constructed a wood structure for two thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars.
See your emotions, your second movement, second. How's this compared to last year's?
It's pretty much identical. I could check the things today and the only difference is the inflation of two hundred dollars, such as for, um, increasing prices of materials.
Okay. So, we've been very pleased with the first structure?
Yes, and they also, the same company, um, they also did recent repairs on the west side of the clubhouse worth at the golf course and they did a great job.
Okay. Additional questions for Kate? Tiny, you'll be done before two of us?
Yes.
Roll call please.
Mark?
Yes.
Ego?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Question carry, thank you, Kate. And Kate, you can stay right there, let somebody know if that came to attention. We'll move into department head and courts.
Okay, so now first I wanted to just talk about the upcoming dance on first, which is Saturday. And, um, I was looking at ways and things we do with the dance this year to kind of enhance it or just something different we haven't done before. And, um, I ended up contacting the Miss America Association and they put me in contact with the Miss Kansas Association. Um, unfortunately, Miss Kansas, um, is at town with the fire obligation, the weekend of our dance. However, they did get me in touch with, um, Paige Hoffman, who is the Miss Kansas Outstanding Teen two thousand and sixteen. Um, she's actually almost vulnerable, she resides in the nest in Kansas. Um, and in talking to her, she was extremely interested to come to the dance. Um, not doing anything too formal with her, but she's gonna come, hang out with the girls, maybe lead them to the dance or two and just kind of be there for them and hang out with them for the entirety of the dance, so she'd be with the rest of them. So, yeah, I do. Um, and also on that note, uh, we did extend registration for through the end of this week, Friday. Um, but as of the end of the workday today, we have eighty-six couples since signed up. Um, and that actually also doesn't include the additional siblings as well, which have about twenty-five of those. So, we're pushing closer about two hundred people coming through the doors on Saturday night, which is awesome. So, it'll be fun. Do they give a little red carpet with them, like prom? I have not done that. That's something I'm looking at doing, at, at least at the minimum, finding a red carpet to throw out there, which would be pretty fun. But we do have, once they get in the doors, we have a bowling cards that's decorated, um, and with decorations. And I'm looking at maybe getting a, uh, a bubble machine this year to hang out there, so, um, we'll see. Um, and then switching gears, we go into the golf course. Um, I don't have any more rounds to report to you all tonight, just due to the golf course not really being open in January. Um, but we do have a nice little green peace box that is right outside the front door of the clubhouse. And we have been getting money coming in through that box, um, in the month of January and much more so, um, February. And we have started opening on weekends, Saturday and Sunday, um, starting in February. Um, and actually, when staff opened this past weekend, they, uh, checked the green peace box and we had over a hundred dollars sitting in the green peace box. So, that was definitely cool to see. Um, but outside of that, we're just working on getting some staff hired right now. We only have two, um, clubhouse employees on staff and, um, do them being teachers, thoroughly available to work on the weekends right now. Um, so, once we do get some staff hired that can work during the week, during the day, we'll hopefully be able to get the clubhouse built in more regular places. Um, and that's all I have tonight. If you all have any more questions?
Kate, I did read in Friday report, we were working on your point sale machine or software and all that. Is there a estimated date when you'll have that?
Right now, um, we're just working on getting our pricing and specs, because we're gonna include that with the rest of our, um, computer software upgrades that we have to do within the city. Um, but right now, we're having to get a new computer in there. We have to upgrade our computer software. Right now, we use Active Gen, which is incredibly old. Um, and we have to update to Golf Now if you stay with this company. Um, and then we also found out recently we need to upgrade our credit card services as well. So, yeah, hopefully this gets a little better so we can get credit cards running and out there. But I've been pretty surprised slash pleased with how well we've been doing with not having credit cards left in the whole itself.
So, there isn't an end date? I mean, you're, you're saying by April one or by March?
Um, yeah, hopefully sooner than that. I don't want to go any longer than that, Steve. Unfortunately, it's on them right now, waiting to get hold of some, I think that's what we need, so...
Okay.
Yeah, I called out Saturday, it was obviously nice staying, there were no cars available until late afternoon. So, then when, when I got out there, they said the credit card machine was down and that it wasn't working.
Mm-hmm.
Is, what's the status on it?
We, what we found out is apparently the credit card system we had out there or the company that, um, was not anymore, but Active Gen that we have, they were, they supported or they used what was called PC charge. And we found out, um, that PC charge was not supported by them. And out of that, they just won't support them or they're not existing anymore, but that's why it's not working. So, we have to either, I go on Mercury that they support now. Um, so, if we upgrade and go to Golf Now or for anything to be integrated, we would have to get a contract with Mercury for the credit cards.
Were you able to run credit cards manually then or did you have to...
We can't even do that right now because we don't have any sort of credit card support.
It's a situation.
No.
What's the software do? I mean, does it keep track of a lot of things?
The Golf Now, yeah, it has all your point sale on it. Um, so you can put all your concession beer, all that in there. And then it also has the T sheet, um, the ways for us to input memberships as they come in and it tracks memberships for us. So, we can look up and know, okay, this member's paid, they're good for the year, this member still owes us so-and-so for the year. Um, and it just tracks pretty much everything that would be related to golfers within it.
T-times and all that too?
T-times, yeah. And it has integrated systems so that like golfers can go on golfnow.com. And if they want to put the tee time, they can book a tee time at our course or any course that is part of their site through there online. And it's supposed to and it's working correctly automatically sent into that course.
Do our members know that?
We get a lot from them, yes. I think, I mean, there's definitely a good chunk of people that...
So, that's the software we're currently using, what you're gonna renew with the...
Yeah, and it's Active Gen right now, they've since switched up to Golf Now, which is what we have to change.
And that's where the chain, I mean, the credit card thing is like two, there's two pieces, you know?
Two pieces, but they're integrated, correct.
But the order that has to happen is that computer needs to be upgraded so that we can then get the upgraded software that has the integrated, um, credit card. So... Yeah, I mean, we gotta bid, we gotta bid it out. And we're in the process of getting bids. It'll come to council on March sixth. Now, I, I told Kate, I said, if somebody comes in and, and all they have is a credit card, then give them a gratis round.
I think we can put something up that we need to communicate the paper and cash or your checkbook is not gonna be here for now. We can't use something like Square or any other kind of just...
We had a Clover Mini out there, which is, that basically is, looks just like an iPad, like a three-dimensional iPad.
Yeah.
And we had it all set up, we could go. The only problem with that is using the system for iPad or something similar to it, there's no possible way to integrate it with Golf Now. Um, and one of the reasons why we need for Golf Now is for tracking purposes to allow us to see, you know, what we're selling, what's coming and what's not going.
So, whenever somebody, whenever you make a bill on Golf Now and you hit pay, it doesn't give you an option to say cash, check, credit, charge account, stuff like that?
On the, yeah, on the Active Gen we have right now, it does, you'll see on the bottom of it, it shows all the options, you know, credit, check, you know, cash, whatever it's paying for.
And if you do credit, it doesn't process, but when it, we have to match up what you did on the other one?
Well, the, the thing is, it's actually separate, is we can, we can do it all on like this Clover we have and it's all there for us. But then our Golf Now software or the Active Gen we have now, we, we still have to go back in and manually input everything that we did on that credit card Clover into the computer. So, we're taking the extra steps to put that in there. Otherwise, Larry, it may have no way of tracking the other.
Yeah.
If we don't manually go back and put it in.
But you could do.
You could do it, but it should be extremely time-consuming, especially with my staff that's out in the clubhouse, they get busy in the summer with, you know, getting cards cleaned.
I don't know what we're talking about, it's very difficult or something.
Well, and I'll tell you what, the reason we have a passion, well, try to get the specs number one, because we were like, you can't just put a system out there if you don't know what you need. So, working on that, so working with the company. Number two, you look at the historic rounds played in January and February and early March, they're minimal. So, the amount of revenue that we're missing out on by credit cards is not significant. Um, I'd rather foot, I'd rather err on the side of customer service and give somebody a free round of golf that shows up with a credit card. And I think it's a great idea to put it on the website, but that's not gonna lead me to all of it. Give them a free round and hopefully that creates a sense of goodwill, will, not will, will, and they come back.
And we actually could just, the first day we meet Cameron, we had my deal, we opened up on Saturday morning and all of a sudden we were like, whoa, can't take credit cards. And we actually, I mean, our people that have come in there are so gracious and good that we had people leaving and then go back in the town just to get cash and then come back and pay us on that particular Saturday. So, I mean, we have good people coming out there.
But all that that you said, when you get to summer, spring more and summer, then the amount of people who might use credit cards.
Will have wired in five.
Yeah, or the process of doing it.
But that would be significant, most definitely.
Is Golf Now expensive?
No, I'm trying to get the price going on that. There's options between them and cloud and server and one other option. So, we're just having to weigh the cost and see what's gonna be better.
Cable service up there?
We don't, we just have general channels.
So, it's like, oh, just over the phone?
No, they're connected into the server here, can't have a Wi-Fi that gets repeated through the wastewater treatment line.
All right. Thank you, Kate. Eric?
A couple of items to update on the travel extension project with Wilson and Mary. We feel check plans that are due to be submitted to KDOT in mid-March. We'll review those before they go off. We should have had some pictures and some drawings and sketches of anything's cool, we'll forward to you and you can look at it too. It's actually the first concrete thing that we've gotten out of this since the grant along those. So, I'm really looking forward to that. That'll be in the next couple of weeks, because we do plan on getting that submitted in mid-March. The other item is a rezone request obtained last week. The hearing is scheduled for March fourteenth, hearing city council. It's a rezone of a single parcel from R one, single families to R two, okay? It's real similar to a rezone that we did in twenty fifteen that was contentious. In fact, it's in the same neighborhood. It's a lot kind of away from, um, that rezone, although I looked at the two hundred feet notifications that go directly to the property owner. There wasn't any total, but it's in the same neighborhood. The petitioner has renovated a single-family home and uses it as a short-term residential rental. We did quite an improvement on the property that the neighbors generally are very happy with the renovation. His desire is to move a second detached, uh, structure and as well. And it's gonna have to be small, given setback and block coverage requirements. It'll probably be in the neighborhood of seven to eight hundred square feet. Picture one. It's funny because it's very similar to the accessory dwelling and thing that we were pushing last year, planning zoning. Randy Flax, mother-in-law, that would be allowed in her yards in certain older parts of town. The planning zoning actually didn't like that idea and that's why we had to hurry more about that. They, they put a stone on it, we don't talk about that right now. Uh, the other thing I'm concerned about, see, I don't know how planning zoning could go on this. The last time they voted to not recommend the rezone change. I think it's gonna depend on what shows up in the public here. But I'm putting you on notice, there are some rules and regulations. You will address the issue, uh, at the first meeting in April, no matter what. And you will vote at that time to approve their recommendation, to, um, vote against the recommendation. We're sending back to the, for further discussion, which has, it'll be coming up in the next few weeks.
Is there a structure north of existing house or is it...
I think that's the only place.
That's what I thought, I didn't explain, yeah, okay.
So, is it comparable to a tiny home?
No, tiny home would be considered, oh, less than four hundred square feet. Our minimum dwelling size is six hundred square feet, which is small. The one that they're thinking about is a little larger than that, that would actually be moved in. We'll actually have to get, uh, board zoning appeals approval on that too. There's a set of things that will have to happen, but the first thing that I talked, told the petitioner is that it will have to be rezoned in R two or R three. And we'll be talking about it, I'm sure, in the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. Larry? Nutrition and finance?
What do I have?
Greg. Inverting Greg is all you gotta say.
Um, actually, I passed out the document that Larry prepared.
Actually, I passed out the document that Larry prepared, the financial statement analysis for analysis. This is year-end 2016. I'll cover some, some highlights real quick. One thing you'll notice is that revenue, total revenue in the general fund was down approximately $162,000 from 2015. A lot of this had to do with sales tax revenue. Even though we made budget from 2015, the county collections were down $61,000. The city comes across at $179,000, but also depends on how it gets, it's allocated to different items. We'll point out that the sunstrom was $44,000 in revenue over 2015. On the expense side, general government was down 40% year-to-year comparison. The change in the police department in the increase is predominantly due to purchasing a new vehicle last year. And you'll notice a significant jump in the streets department, and that's reflective of the more aggressive street maintenance program that has been implemented. Swimming pool. The difference in expense there are the slide repair and the wood structure. I will say, for those that remember, we've had issues with that slide and the resurfacing job that was done. They're supposed to be coming back in March to completely redo the whole slide. So hopefully, we will end up with a much better product than we ended up with at the end of, or prior to the start of last pool season. Jumping to recreation, activity fees increased approximately $3,200 over 2015. And expenses are down about $7,000. The golf course, the revenue was $165,000 in 2016. It was $172,000 in 2015. But as part of that revenue was due to transfers in 2015 from the recreation fund and from the general fund, it was just over $15,000.
You did not do that in 2016?
No, in fact, in the expenditure side, the, approximately $30,000 less in expenditures were made in golf course in 2016. And that was also transferring back the $6,876 to recreation. And, you know, transferred back to recreation to reimburse that transfer. And then the other portion, the real savings was in payroll in contracting superintendent services as opposed to adding an on-staff golf course superintendent. You know, the, the other funds are fairly standard, year-to-year. No big, big differences. Well, electric, where it says under expenditure, you'll see that purchase power was $2.3 million. And compared to $2 million in 2015, a lot of that is just the cost of, well, production is our cost of purchase power. When you look at the revenue, we only had a $55,000 increase in revenue in electric, but we had almost a $300,000, well, $270,000 increase in the cost of purchase power. Also, I want to talk about a couple of bills that are in the state legislature right now on electric. One of them deals with, they call it electric utility deregulation. Right now, it's only conceptual in nature, but for those of you that remember back from the late 90s, early 2000s, retail wheeling. In other words, you could choose whatever electric provider you wanted. That bill's out there, it's being pushed very strongly by large users, large manufacturers, large big box stores. In fact, Walmart's a company that's really pushing this provider choice issue. Another one that we've sailed rather innocuous, which I got a text from, they inquiring about, was the, what they call the Uniform Electric Bill, which sounds reasonable in that every electric bill is the same from one provider to the other. Until you look at all the items that would have to be listed, you'd be looking at having, have a total of, just on your electric bill, 22 different items listed of cost. So we would have to hire a consultant, and I don't know what, it'd probably be over $50,000 to go in and unbundle everything. Well, we'll see from, the charge per kilowatt hour for generation that covers physical infrastructure to generate electricity. Charge per kilowatt to cost to transmit. All costs associated with environmental upgrades. A flat meter service charge that covers administrative costs, including billings, billing, postage, software, and other overhead. Any charges for sustainable energy, renewable energy, energy efficiency, or other programs. A decommissioning fee charged to cover the cost of removing generation and service. And we do have that embedded in our rate now for Wolf Creek Nuclear Energy. A demand charge, well, we have very few demand meters out there, so we'd be looking at changing out probably 1,600 meters at the tune of $350 a year just so we can measure demand on all these residential meters. And yet, we don't bill on demand. A description and charge for these special assessments. And the list goes on. So while it sounds, I guess, calling it Uniform Electric Bill sounds rather, rather nice and simple, but if I'm buying from here and I'm buying from there, I'm looking at the same thing, but.
Who's writing that?
Well, Senate Bill 196. And.
Did it have any traction? I assume it did have a hearing.
It hasn't had a hearing. I know it's been slated, I think, for a hearing this week. I don't know a lot of detail on it yet. I think it's, you know, it's in the Senate, so I'm, I need to do some more research on, on actually who's the sponsor, whether it's the committee or the chair of the committee. I think it's the chair of the committee that's pushing it. I mean, I'm not even sure our bill's big enough to list all these charges that we've gone from a postcard to an apple by a lemon sheet that we also have water sewer trap, water feed cell, that we gave us. Yeah, it's been a team of items all there. You see that bill? So that's something that's going on right now. Other than that, let's see, may I ask any questions?
Council members, any questions?
I'm moved, we agree.
Is there a second, all those in favor say aye?